Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Select Board of the Town of Danvers for December 5th. And Mr. Duggan will lead us in the Pledge of Legions.
The Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And Kathy, our regular town clerk, is away on vacation. And Stephanie Giroux, who is the Assistant Town Clerk, will be residing tonight in the place of the clerk. And thank you and welcome, Stephanie. First, if you could announce number one.
Yeah, approval minutes of November 21st.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second. Is there any discussion? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That is a vote. And with the, I hope, the indulgence of the board, we are going to take item number three next in line, because that's the most important item on our agenda tonight. So, let me see now. Stephanie, if you would please read, announce item number four.
The Board will recognize the accomplishment of the Danvers High School Boys' Cross Country Team having won the NEC Championship Meet.
Thank you. And we'd like to have Drew Batts, the Athletic Director, will introduce the coaches and the players tonight.
Yeah, first, I just want to thank you all for having us here. And also, obviously, just to kind of extend and a huge congratulations to these student athletes and our coaches. As like they have won that NEC Championship Meet, and then they will also make school history, winning our Division 2B Championship Meet, followed by the Division 2 State Championship. So it's one, you know, it's a huge accomplishment for these students athletes and for us as a school. And it is the first time that, you know, this program has won a state championship. And for our school, it's the first time that we have a state championship since 2017. So a huge congratulations to all of our student athletes, Coach Bartlett, Coach Walsh. And I'm going to let Coach Bartlett introduce the student athletes.
Thank you, Drew.
Mr. Chairman, well, he's going to the microphone. Well, that was the point. Decat is having some technical difficulties, and that microphone is not working tonight. So we ask that people speak loudly.
Could you speak up so we can all hear you?
I'll do my best.
You're doing good so far.
All right. My name is Jeff Bartlett. I'm the head Boys &amp; Girls Cross Country Coach at Danvers High School. I teach at Old Richard Middle School as well. We are joined by some of our student athletes today. And I'll just go in order that I see them, starting with our captains. We have Sean Moore. We have Will Conklin, Will Dumont, J.J. Rooney. And then coming back this way, Mike Race, Gavin Marshall, Ben Wilhelm, and Cooper Gattadaro, representing the Boys' Cross Country Team with your Division 2 Massachusetts championship.
Thank you very much. And is Tom Wal- is Tom Wa- Jeff, is Tom Walsh here?
He is not.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. We have a resolution tonight. And Maureen will be reading the resolution now.
Thank you. We, the Select Board of the Town of Danvers, by virtue of the authority vested in us by the people of Danvers, as elected officials, do hereby recognize the Danvers High School Boys' Cross Country Team by means of this, whereas, yeah, the Boys' Cross Country Team finishing 5-1 team in the regular season, winning the NEC Championship Met, and made up of William Conklin, Sean Moore, Jacob Crandall, Charles Garland, Cooper Gattadaro, Lucas Landry, Gavin Marshall, Jason Rooney, Jonathan Rooney, Mike Race, Julian Morris, Lucas Benesia, Benjamin Wilhelm, and Will Dupont, earning a first-ever MIAA Division 2B Championship. And whereas the Boys' Cross Country Team went on to compete and win their first-ever MIAA Division 2 Championship and the Division 2 State Championship, represented by Sean Moore, Will Conklin, J.J. Rooney, Charlie Garland, Will Dupont, Cooper Gattadaro, and Lucas Benesia. And whereas members Will Conklin, Sean Moore, J.J. Rooney, Charlie Garland earned all conference honors. And whereas each team member embodies the spirit of school athletics by representing their town, their school and its student body, the athletic program, and the school administration by conducting themselves as gentlemen always. And whereas the team's dedication and hard work brought honor to Danvers High School by their pursuit of excellence under the guidance of coaches Jeff Bartlett and Tom Walsh. And now, therefore, let it be proclaimed that the Town of Danvers recognizes and celebrates, along with these young men, their families, their coaches, and teammates, the positive impact of their hard work and pursuit of excellence has had and will continue to have on student athletes of Danvers High School for years to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Maureen.
Second.
There was a second. Any discussion? Is there a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Well, of course, that's unanimous. Are there parents in the room tonight?
Of course.
Would the parents please stand and take a bow?
That's great. Yay. Good job.
And with the permission of the students, we will present the official resolution, if we could, to Jeff Bartlett.
While we're doing that, Mr. Chairman, I'm sitting here remembering my days in Danvers High School, running cross country and the mile. And I just did the math and scared myself how long ago it was. But congratulations. It's a great effort. Good success.
Congratulations.
David, David, can I say something? I just want to say, you student athletes, your parents, the parents who did a great job. This is wonderful news. I think you said since 2017, right? I mean, this is great. You are, you are at Danvers High School. You represent the Town of Danvers and be proud. We're proud of you.
Thank you, Maureen. And our meetings are sometimes very interesting. You are most welcome to stay here and see what happens. But you also may leave now if you like. And thank you very much, Drew.
Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. Thank you, students.
I tried making copies.
Good news. Very good news.
Very nice. Thank you, Maureen.
Thank you, David.
And now, we can proceed to, thank you for arranging or getting those names.
Do you want to put public business at the end?
No. The reason is that Mark wanted it to be. Where's Mark? Did he leave?
He's there. We can put it, we could, he just wanted this to go first. We can put him at the end.
That's okay. Fine.
You want to be at the beginning?
My affirmations are the same.
Mark and Bill. Mr. Zubrick and Mr. Bill, would you like to be on now or at the end of the meeting?
No.
I'm just giving this.
Oh, okay. Well, why don't we proceed to item number four?
Okay. Item number four. The Board is requested to renew liquor licenses for calendar year 2024 as presented. All the paperwork is in order.
Thank you, dear. Are there comments, questions, or conversations from members of the Board?
And will we accept the slate presented to us?
Thank you. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion or conversation among members of the Board?
Just wondering, and maybe you don't know this, and that would be understandable. One of them is not renewing. That's breakaway.
Yes.
Because they've closed. How many open liquor licenses of each type do you know, do we have?
I don't have that answer, but I can check with the town court, Kathy, and get back to you.
That'd be great.
All right.
Thank you. Anything else, Board members? Hearing nothing else, is there a motion of second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It is a vote. Thank you. Proceed to, no, why don't we go, rather than have the Town Manager report on various items, why don't we go to new public business and ask that citizens limit their comments to two minutes to the best of their ability? Are there public comments? Mr. Zubrick. Mark, if you could keep your voice up, because I understand that mic is not working.
I can, I can keep my voice up there. Thank you. I appreciate the time and the occasion because I even asked for the cross-track team had an opportunity to present this motion about their wins. And I thought that was more appropriate than what I'm going to speak about. And I hope that you give me the courtesy of listening to what I have to say because this is something that's been brewing for a long time. The public access to the Board communications, unduly restrained by Board Chairman and the members themselves. I have noticed that over the last
Mark, I'm sorry. Could you repeat that?
The access to the Board of Selectment has been limited in the last few meetings. And this is something I haven't seen over the 30 years that I have been involved in public office or public access to government. Most of the classification meeting that was held two meetings ago, three meetings ago, no public comment was allowed. And the thing is that that is an opportunity for the business community as well as the public, the taxpayers, to express their views in regard to classification. Now, classification has become such an issue that now you're looking at a calculation of two-thirds, one-third, and then you just raise the rate. The rate went up quite a bit, 4.16, oh, 4.62 percent. It also went up on the commercial and industrial. However, there was no communication between the public and the Board during that discussion. And I know what you're going to tell me, is that that was a business meeting. Well, this Board needs to listen to the public. November 22nd, 21st, the proposal for the trash fee was presented. At that meeting, I raised myself, my hand, at least three times to make a comment on the appropriateness and legality of a fee that is a tax instead of a fee. I was denied. And I spoke to the, some of the Board members, and I have not been able to get an answer why I was denied.
Excuse me, Mr. Zubrick. You and I spoke at
Yes.
at my coffee klatch at McDonald's. You told me that I had failed to recognize you, and I apologized profusely, because I would never ignore a citizen, including you, of course. And I did not see you raise a hand, or you would have been noticed.
I appreciate that comment, but I just want to make sure that I'm clear about what I was saying right there.
And I made it, I made it clear. I'm sorry. And you can go on and on and on, but I'm still sorry. And you'll be recognized if you put your hand up, so I can see it next time.
That's why I'm here tonight, because I need to express my views, and I like to make sure that I get them across to you. How do you actually obtain input from the residents about issues such as a trash fee? The discussion at the meetings that were conducted on the trash fee were limited to very few people having an opportunity to even speak to the committee. The committee was made up of 18 to 20 people. So it was orchestrated in that, and it was a dictate at the meeting of November 21st. I understand that maybe you have an absolute legal right to do it. However, I don't think it was appropriate. The, my, and I'm going to try to close up my comments, because I have two options that I want to present to proposals, to present to this Board. One of them is to reconsider the vote of November 21st, because that was not totally discussed by the taxpayers in this town. The second proposal is that, as you know, in the last annual meeting, Town Meeting, I made a proposal to set up a review committee of the Town Manager Act, or the Town Charter, or whatever you want to call it. That needs to be looked at, because there are issues with that Town Charter. And that Town Charter needs to be reviewed. It has not been looked at since 1994 or 93. We need to update that, because what you're using right now is legislation to allow some of these fees to be imposed, because the legislators have figured out a way to give the town an opportunity to override two and a half fees.
Whatever you say is always accepted and respected. And what you say will clearly be noted by me and I'm sure the other members of the Board. Thank you.
Well, I wish you would consider a reinstatement or revisit, considered the vote on the trash fee, because that needs to be explored further. And it needs to go to Town Meeting.
No.
The amount doesn't
Mark, thank you for your wisdom. That's really enough and beyond the ordinary scope, because you are a senior statesman in the, in the town. So that's enough for tonight.
Thank you. I will continue this discussion.
Mr. Chairman, if I just might offer a point of clarification, not a rebuttal, not a, there were two public meetings, of which Mr. Zubrick attended and spoke at both, about the trash fee specifically. The meeting that we had here was a report by the Town Manager, which he again asked for our direction. Even though by the Town Charter and by the Town Manager's Act, he has the, has the authority to do so, he again did not want to go into it without some identification of whether this was something that the Board and the other Boards had an appetite for. He got clear indication from those other meetings, and he got a clear indication from our meeting. And it was not a vote that was something that was binding to him. It was a directional vote. You had two public opportunities at the Firehouse and then at the Senior Center, which you took advantage of. There's not, and you know, having been a selectman, there is a vast difference between a public hearing and a public meeting. And not all our business is conducted with public input.
Such an issue as the trash fee, which is basically a transfer of tax revenue to a fee revenue, is something that needs to be addressed by the Town Meeting and not just the Town Manager. The Town Manager did ask for a confirmation vote from you as the Board. I understand that. But that was to cover, you know, his behind on the issue.
That's, Mark, please, that's out of order.
That, it's not out of order.
It really is.
It is. That's what it was.
Well, then, you have exhausted your time, and it's always appreciated, because you have a lot of wisdom to add. And that was good tonight. Thank you. It's over.
The discussions that took place at the Senior Center.
Mr. Chairman, you've, you've asked him to stop. Can we ask him to stop?
Well, I did.
I know. No, I, I don't need a reply. I'm off, the chairman has said that that's enough. We've heard sufficient.
Well, this, see, this is an example of what happens with the general public that wants to speak. The people are afraid of coming up and speaking their mind, because you shut them off.
There is absolutely no chance you've ever been afraid of speaking your mind, Mark, and I respect that.
I have not.
Thank you, Mr. Zubrick. Is there any other public comment? Yes.
Hi.
And would you, I'm sorry that that mic is not working. Could, could you speak up?
Yes. Hi, my name is Michael Bean. 10 Wenham Street, lifelong resident, Danvers.
Hi, Michael.
Thank you. I'd like to give my time to Mark. I don't think he was finished. I want to hear what he has to say.
No, thank you.
Really?
Yeah.
In a Town Meeting, in a meeting like this?
Yeah, we have certain rules and protocols, and we're following it. And we went 10 times beyond for Mark, Mr. Bean.
If the room was full, I understand, but there's nobody here. Thank you.
Now, we will proceed to item number five, the Town Manager's Report. Oops. You're supposed to go ahead.
Item number five, the Town
Somebody has a hand up.
Excuse me.
There's one more. Do business with that.
Sure. Can you, can you go to the microphone, please?
The non-mic.
Podium.
The non-mic. There's no microphone.
Well, I guess there's no microphone. And identify us.
Sorry, I know you didn't see me. I appreciate your time, and I'll be brief, and I'll try to stick to those two minutes.
Can you introduce yourself, please?
Yes. I am Joanne Belacogci, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 2. I attended the zoning Board meeting last Tuesday, I believe it was the 27th of November. And I had a few takeaways from that meeting that I wanted to bring to the attention of the Board, because I think there needs to be a conversation and maybe a hard discussion on some of the things I observed during that meeting, on the way the Board was conducting themselves. The first one, it was, and this is all regarding the debate around 98 Newbury Street, which was the proposed expansion of the trailer park that's located. There were many residents of Butters there that evening who, so much wasn't totally opposed to the project, but wanted it scaled back and brought a lot of examples, took the time, are concerned about their property values, are concerned about their peace on their own property, whether it's light noise, noise in general, by road access, encroachment onto their property, and privacy, and so forth. What I was concerned about, and actually did happen to me as well when I tried to make a point, when, is the Chairman interrupted these residents a lot, rushed them along in their presentation. They weren't given a time limit, rushed them along in their presentation. But it always seemed that when the attorney that was presenting for this particular applicant, or if it's any particular applicant, that their attorney is up there, that they are almost running the meeting more than the Board. And that was a little disturbing. I'm a new Town Meeting Member, so I'm kind of taking a fresh look at things. And I know the residents were upset that they were rushed along and not listened to. The second was actually a comment by one of the Board members. And it was actually quoted in yesterday Salem News on the, regarding the approval of the expansion.
Oh, no, please.
It was actually quoted in the Salem News yesterday on the expansion, of the approval of the expansion of the trailer park. So I'll just read it, so I don't misquote this Board member. Bear with me. And what it was, was, is that people on Center Street, you don't have to live there, meaning the trailer park. The trailer park residents have to live there. These people, they can afford a $600,000 to $800,000 home on Center Street. End quote. So, I, I mean, definitely some emotions came into that remark that I don't believe should by Board, by a zoning Board number. I think they should follow our zoning Board laws and make impartial decisions along those lines. A remark like that can leave people who are for or against a project that's going before the Board with the impression that there's some bias, that the decisions are not being made as in accordance to what our zoning laws are. And it can leave a bad taste. It can fester a us against them attitude, which it did. So what I'm asking of the Select Board tonight is to have a tough conversation, have a tough discussion about how these zoning Board meetings are being conducted, how these decisions are being made, and to ensure that these decisions are impartial and according to the zoning laws. We have, I know a special Town Meeting coming up after the beginning of the year that's proposing some zoning changes. I think this, these points that I raised tonight definitely should be addressed before that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I also, we, we don't usually respond, but I will tell you this, that for 50, excuse me, I've been a lawyer for 54 years, and in the first 30 of those years, I appeared regularly in zoning Board hearings in this town and many other communities. As a matter of fact, as I counted them up once, there were 2,000 of them that I had done.
You have experience with
Well, and I so totally, completely hear everything you say. Just be assured. And thank you.
It was just very concerning, and I wanted to bring it to, to your attention, and hopefully the Board respects your comments and brings due attention.
Thank you. You have been heard.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your time. Let me see now. We are on to
Number five.
Number five.
The Town Manager will report to the Board on various items of interest.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Few updates for you tonight, starting with a couple of events that are coming up. On December 11th, we have our menorah lighting. That's going to be in the square as opposed to the library this year. The menorah was delivered today. And at the request of the Human Rights Committee, as well as the members of the Jewish community, we'll be, we'll be conducting the lighting on the 11th at 5:30 in the square. Gelt will be provided from the, from the fire truck, which will be participating. It'll be right in front of the CVS. And all are welcome to attend. The following night, which I'm sure will be referenced as well tonight, we have our, the downtown holiday party hosted by the Select Board. That'll be from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the Berry Tavern. On the 13th, if those who've been on social media, particularly the police social media page, will see that there's a Cookie with a Cop event being planned for December 13th at the high school from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Registration is required for that event. Cookies and materials were generously donated by Putnam Pantry for that event. So we'll have, this is, this is building on a very successful pumpkin event that was conducted at the police station with police officers and, and kids from the community. So we'll be, we'll be having a cookie decorating evening with the police this, on the 13th at the high school. You should receive by the end of this week, the materials we discussed at our last meeting, speaking of the special Town Meeting that's scheduled for February, clean and redlined versions of the zoning and general bylaw amendments that have been, that have been working their way through the, the public hearing process with the planning board. We'll get those out to the Board again by the end of this week. Looking ahead to our meeting on the 19th, I had another meeting this morning with staff from Engineering, DPW Electric and Planning, to see the, the status of the downtown infrastructure and streetscape presentation that this Board will receive at that meeting. Looking ahead to really the next sort of 18 months, 24 months, in terms of our construction season, using a combination of some of the ARPA funds that were designated by this Board for the repaving of Maple and High Street, some funds in the electric department for streetlight improvements, as well as some funds that have been earmarked in free cash related to the 40R zoning updates that were approved by Town Meeting in 2017. So again, we'll, we'll have that presentation here on So again, we'll, we'll have that presentation here on the 19th. All are welcome to attend, to hear what, what staff's looking for feedback on. And then the final update, I had, I had the chance this past weekend to travel to Arkansas for my first board meeting with the ICMA. I had a chance to meet with other members of the board and represent the town in our region at that event, which was conducted over Friday and Saturday. Very exciting to be, to be part of conversations happening at a very high level in terms of the local government and some of the strategic objectives and challenges facing, facing the profession. So that's all that I have, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Yeah, thank, Mark, I'm sorry, Steve, could you re-identify the time and place of the menorah lighting?
5:30 on December 11th in the square.
Any, like, in the square?
In front of CVS specifically.
In front of CVS, thank you. What's our next item? Our next...
Number six, the board will consider consent calendar items as they appear below.
Thank you. Is there any motion or...
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion, any second, is a discussion. Hearing them, is there a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is a vote. Thank you. And where are we next?
Number seven, correspondence, Select Board, new business, previous new public business updates, and Select Board closing comments.
Thank you. Matt, do you want to start at your end, please?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just some more discussion about the trash fee. So would the chair entertain, would he accept the motion for reconsideration of the vote that we, that the board took?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Under Robert's rules, only somebody voting in the affirmative called for a reconsideration vote.
I would second it if we could, David.
Can't.
Can't.
Neither of you voted in favor of the action, whatever?
All right, fair enough.
No, Matt, because I don't want to leave that up to the...
No, I understand. Robert's Rules of Orders dictate that. I would have had to have voted in the affirmative.
As far as I know.
Yeah, I, I agree. But I, I do think that it, it should have gone to Town Meeting to have more, more input, more feedback from elected representatives, I think. But I do recognize that recently found some, a state statute that gives the Town Manager the authority to create the fee. That's under Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 28(c) is in Charlie, subsection F is in Frank. It, it permits the town to impose a user fee specifically for the collection and disposal of solid waste, and that this statute does not require a Town Meeting action. My concern is maybe there's other similar statutes that have, also allow the Town Manager to create additional fees. So I'm, I have a concern with that. Again...
Can I, can I jump in for something? Is that all right?
Well, if Matt, if Matt has done...
Yeah, I just think that, just one more point, just that, you know, these fees, they remind me of when I went to UMass back in the 80s, where the Board of Trustees at UMass didn't, they weren't allowed to increase the tuition, but they found various methods to impose fees on the students, and the amount of, to, the totality of the fees exceeded the tuition. And that continues, that pattern continues today where the Board of Trustees annually increase fees. So it's kind of a, it's, to me, it's just another, it's just another form of taxation, I think. So I'm just concerned going down the road that we can, will seek additional fees. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Any other comments, Matt, for tonight?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Maureen?
All right, so let's go positive first. The glass, glass is half-full. I attended the Falcon Fest with the tree lighting in the square. What a fantastic job that group did. Anybody that went and saw the parade for the first time back in the town of Danvers was great. They had, the kids were just so happy to see Santa come down on the fire engine. Thank you for all the volunteers that, that ran that great organization. And I think that Falcon Fest is going to be a bunch of, will give us our town a bunch of good events going forward, you know, when they talked about the bonfires and maybe ice skating, or maybe we get back to the hot chocolate down the meadows, or whatever we got to do to make this, this town more desirable to live. And then, you know, just a comment with regards to Select Board Member Duggan. As everybody knows, that him and I did vote no for the trash fees. And I've been doing a little research myself, and he was quoting some, some laws too, and I was, also want people to look at Chapter 39, Section 10, that the voters can call a special town meeting. You know, naturally, you need 200 registered voters, or 20% of the total number of registered voters to be actually put on for a special town meeting. And, you know, it is our town. These are the residents of the town, and I would like to see, and maybe I need some help from some senior board members on what the protocol is, on how we go about doing a special town meeting, and let the floor take it. And all I can say to the residents, if we can get to that point, you want to get in touch with your Town Meeting member in your area and voice your concern, because then it's a vote. Instead of going, you know, under the Town Manager Act, I'd like to see a special town meeting that both Select Board Member Duggan's brought up, and even Mr. Zubrick has brought up too, in, in the audience. So that's what I had to say. And I think I'm going to look into it a little bit more for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Dan?
Well, I'd like to go next, if I may, and I'll, and come back at the end, okay? I do want to make comment about the ZBA meeting the other night. And to be transparent, I would ask you to see what the prop procedure is to have a conversation with the ZBA Chair regarding some comments that were printed in the paper. I didn't watch the meeting.
No, did I?
But I think, you, it might be appropriate for you or a subcommittee to have a conversation on that subject.
Let me consider your comment suggestion, and that's always been a very important part of my concern while I have been in office, and...
We are the appointing authority for ZBA, and...
Yeah, yeah, so...
Take that into consideration.
Sure.
Thank you.
And let me, let me work on that.
Good. And then I do have another item. On the 29th, MMA had a webinar on former government, Town Manager Act, if you will, or by, by law to form the Town Manager Act, or an act of legislature, as Mark alluded to. And the managers, we had three managers on the panel talking about going from a administrator to the Town Manager and the Strong Town Manager Act. And these folks, while Steve is ambivalent to elected versus appointed, as Matt brought up last week on the planning board, all these managers feel strongly that these positions should be appointed and not elected. And the reason they gave for it is because it allows for a wider pool of candidates. It gives the managers ability to find responsibilities. It allows for a better vetting of personnel to serve on these quasi-judicial committees. It's difficult to control elected officials. So these managers were all in favor of appointed versus elected, and that's the trend in the Commonwealth. Auburn went from elected to appointed, and a couple other, Manchester by the Sea did as well. And under, well, spouting on General laws tonight, Mass. General Law 411B requires only a Select Board and School Committee be elected. No other boards are required to be elected. The law is moot on that subject. My thought, looking at the downside of appointed positions, is the sometime a lack of commitment to people that we appoint. They don't either understand the time commitment. They don't understand, if they don't show up at a meeting, it affects their other fellow members. And I think that's something we should have a conversation about at such time as when we do review the Town Manager Act in the future, which we will be doing. And something else to keep in mind, Steve, when we do that, a lot of these Town Manager Acts have a clause allowing for a Select Board to review at some point in time the bylaws or the charter. We don't have anything in our charter to that point. Some of these communities, when they first went to a new charter, they had in there, the Select Board can review it annually. We don't need to do it annually, maybe five years or something. But at least a timeframe where a board can look back at what has been going on, and I think that would be a good idea when we get to that point. Steve, maybe add that to the list of things to look at. So the, but my point is that managers feel it's best for the community to have the appointing authority by the manager. Will this split the same as we have some appointing authority? It's kind of a balanced act, and many communities do that. So I just wanted to report on that webinar.
Can I, while we're on that subject, I, and you can come back if you have this. In your discussion, while the selectmen in some had the right to review the charter, did they have the right to change the charter? Or was it review and recommend? Because, and the reason I'm asking is, I would think that it would always go to Town Meeting for a change because, because political winds change, you know, and you wouldn't...
To answer your question, it says to review annually or whatever timeframe and make recommendations that either have to go to Home Rule Petition or Town Meeting if it's a bylaw.
Thanks for that, Clerk. Thank you. Thank you.
Are you through with that?
I'm through with that.
Good. Thank you.
Comments?
Yes, a couple. One on the ZBA, you mentioned it, so I was going to let it go as, as a open, as a new business, but you mentioned it. I did watch it. As a matter of fact, there were two. I attended the first one as representative of the Affordable Housing Trust because there is an affordability component to this. Not that it's part of the ZB, not that it's part of the 40B because the DHCD doesn't allow mobile homes to be put on the Affordable Housing Register, but the Affordable Housing Trust is not just interested in 40B. They're interested in providing, providing the opportunity or encouraging the opportunity for affordable opportunities. So I was at the first one, and there was a lot of discussion by residents, and, you know, it's perception about how different people, chair people react, so that's subjective. I might see it different than another person. But I do know there was a lot of discussion. At the first one, I was physically in the room. At the second one, I watched it. And, and you could watch both of them. People can watch both of them. They're on Decad, on-demand videos. And it gets to be a cycle of repetitiveness sometimes about the same subject. Now, people were, some residents were discussing items that were not germane to the application itself, but had some tangential issues. There was that comment made, but in context, it was that people were questioning the affordability component of it. Now, I'm not suggesting that, that, that your, your comments weren't sound and valid in your opinion, it wasn't hur, you know, that they didn't quote it correctly. They did. But it was in the context of this is an affordability issue as well. People who live in the mobile homes have the opportunity that, they don't have the opportunity to buy homes. They don't have that down payment. They don't have that, you know...
So if I, if I may not, sorry to interrupt, I just want to make comment, because I'm not suggesting anything was done wrong.
No, no, I didn't.
And it's out of context. I, I don't know.
Right. So I'm saying, you, you said you didn't know, you didn't watch, and so did the chairman. I did watch. I saw it. To me, it doesn't rise to the occasion of, of some, any, any sort of formality, but there's no reason that we shouldn't look at it and say, hey, is there a better way of engaging? Is there a better opportunity to offer more or foster more communications? That's fine. I, I get it. I understand it. We've had some of it tonight. You know, what, how can we foster better communications? And the neighbors do have real concerns. And to that end, they actually dropped eight units that night, specifically in response to the neighbor saying they're too close to my homes, they're too close here. The applicant at that night dropped eight, and, and it passed. So...
And I'm not questioning the decision.
Nope, no, I get it. I'm just, I'm responding to some comments that were made earlier. But that being said, that I just, I, I think we should all look at it. I've looked at it, I know. But if people feel that there's that review is necessary, certainly we should have it.
Well, just a conversation.
Yep. Then to the trash fee, I, I, so to Member Bernard. The Town Clerk can give you the specifics on how to engage a special town meeting. They've been had before. We've had them before. But before that goes through, I would think that we would want to check with the Town Manager to check with the Town...
Council?
Attorney about the legality of that. There are things that cannot be done at Town Meeting. They can't, Town Meeting can't supersede law. So they can't say, and they can't direct certain actions. Like, for example, you couldn't say you must hire three places. You must do certain things. There's legalities about what Town Meeting has the opportunity to do. So before you spend important time on getting a special town meeting, I would just recommend you talk to the Town Manager, talk to the Town Attorney, find out if what you're thinking is an opportunity or not.
Yeah, that's, thank you for that.
Yeah, because I don't think it's going to be, but that's...
But I, I forgot to say Town Council.
Yeah, Town Council will probably be the person to tell you whether that's even an opportunity. Mr. Zubrick said he thought it should go to Town Meeting. That, it, again, there is legality surrounding what Town Meeting can and cannot do as actions, and I wouldn't want people to spend a lot of time, invaluable time, chasing something that will be stopped at Town Meeting because of the legality of it. So I just suggest that. Other than that, I've gotten no correspondence that, the whole board hasn't gotten, so I think I'm all set for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Did you have anything before your veteran statement?
No.
I just make a couple of comments. And people have listened to me up here for 10 years, and throughout my, my, my old age history, nothing about you, Mr. Bradstreet. Fairness of the boards has always been my concern because I advocated for people before boards for 30 active years and some 2,000 cases throughout the North Shore, most of them being in Danvers. Next comment that I'm having. When I was the Town Moderator for a while here, I screamed to try to find people who were willing to be appointed to the Finance Committee. It was so hard. That's one of the reasons why I'm astonished at the quality currently of our Finance Committee. Wow, where they all came from, high, high, high functioning, caring, intelligent people. How do we get people to go onto these boards? It's not always easy. Sometimes people want to do it, and sometimes they don't. Sometimes people want to go on it because they have some particular acts to grind, which is a terrible kind of appointment to go to any quasi-judicial board. So I was a judge for 11 years. I know what quasi-judicial is. It is to act as a judicial following the law based upon competent development of facts. And I know, it doesn't always happen, not just in Danvers, but in many other places, because members of the boards are not trained. They're not trained to conduct, I'm not trained to conduct this meeting because I just kind of follow what other people have done through the years. So the appearance of impropriety, whether it's legal or not, is terribly important to the sense of, that people have in the integrity of their government. God knows, okay, this is really, I know it's not political. What Clarence Thomas has done to the United States Supreme Court and to our government by that outrageous conduct and countenanced by the chief, I've argued three cases in that court. I feel, and I've been into, in hearings in many other cases, I was always very so. It was like the Holy of Holies. It was like, it was like the Vatican, you know, and let's not go to the Catholic Church right now. not go to the Catholic Church right now. But the appearance of impropriety is so important, I'm constantly, and it's getting better and better and better. I drive through Danvers, of course, a lot, because I live here, and I'm retired, and I do a lot in Danvers. And I never pass a police officer without waving. And I don't do it to get a wave back, but I do it for a connection between a citizen and a very important part of our government. More and more and more, over the last couple of years, I've gotten a wave back, and it's not about me. It's about the appearance that my taxpayers have of respect and mutual inclusion and cooperation, and the elimination of an us versus them. So when I see, and I've, every now and then, over the past few years, I've phoned in my, I remember going through the square some eight or 10 years ago, Verizon was doing something by the old fire station, and there were two police officers, they maybe weren't Danvers, they could have been Middleton, they could have been rented or borrowed from someone, but there were two police officers. The traffic was backed up from that intersection all the way up Locust, I don't know how far up Locust Street it was, while the police officer had a cup of coffee and was talking on his cellphone. Well, I immediately reported it to the town, because that stuff, I don't have to go to work every day, but most of my citizens in this town have to go to work every day. And they're struggling to pay dental bills for their kids and their mortgages, and they see that. It is a devastating, it is a devastating experience for the connection between citizen and government. So I hear you, I know it's important. The other thing is, as a select member, I have no right to comment on what any other board does, because the, well, we do have appointing authority on the zoning board. But as far as threatening somebody with their job, it just certainly isn't my style, and it hasn't been the style of Danvers government while I have been involved for, since 1960. I was first elected at the town meeting in 1965, and I've lived across the street, I keep a good eye on this place. I lived across the street for 54 years. And I pay $8,000 in taxes, by the way, so I don't want anyone to think that I'm not sensitive to taxes. I think, just the thing about the rubbish, I completely hear and understand what Mark and what my other board members have said about the tax versus a fee. I get it, I understand it. I also worried about the change in our rubbish collection contract for the last year. I have been chairman almost for a year, so that is a principle. Bennett and Gardner, and probably Mark, you must have been chairman at some point. So we worry about those things. And I watched, and I asked Steve every step of the way, what are we doing in the negotiations? I'm convinced that David Lane and the other people in our town who worked on the negotiation did a phenomenal job of getting a new contract in place that I think is going to work beautifully. As to how to pay for that, I understand the arguments one way or the other. What I do have is my own feeling as a taxpayer and a very committed member of the Danvers town, is that the $200 is piddling for what we get, okay? I can't drive at night anymore going down to the Cape. I have a home down the Cape, I love to go there. Can't drive anymore, because there's no stripes on the road. State and federal funds have been sent to other countries, but in Danvers, look at our roads. I can drive here at night, we're striped, we're the best plowed in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I don't remember ever having a problem with my sewer in 54 years. And so I say we provide phenomenally good services. And God knows, the Select, the Finance Committee, which I think is the finest that I have ever seen in Danvers, in all of my connection to it, they look at every single penny. I can see the town department heads trying to justify to the town manager and to the Finance Committee, every single, so I don't think that we're wasting money. And I think that whether the $200 is a fee or a tax, and whether there is an overreaching of government to reach public funds, I hear that, and I respect that, and I'll pay attention to it. And the other one of the thing is that, no one's mentioned it tonight, people are complaining to me about the increase of real estate tax in Danvers, which I think was reported to be like 300 and something dollars per average size home in Danvers. All I can say is, wow, there are like five homes for sale in Danvers tonight, because everybody wants to be here. And everybody who's here, including me, in the last couple of years, had a 35% increase in property value. So what I'm trying to say is that I have a sense that I am getting value for my money. And I also want people who speak here and to see us, to know that I am very, very careful about spending somebody else's money, because I don't like anybody spending mine. I didn't have anything else that would be of any interest, I'm sure. So I will ask Mr. Bennett to make a closing comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And to the folks out in the audience, when you see and meet a vet, please say thank you. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dan, and thank you to everybody who comes to the meetings. It means a lot to us, it certainly does to me. Thank you. So we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Okay.